What's the date, 27th, 2017? We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Could everyone please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll note that Tracy Watson has an excused absence tonight and will not be here. There'll be a four-member board tonight. Okay, first on the agenda is approval of the minutes from February 13th, 2017. If everybody had a chance to review those, do you have a motion?
Chair motion to approve the minutes from the February 13th, 2017 meeting, as written.
Do you have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, you're abstaining, that's right. So it's three, three, three O with one abstention. Okay, first on the communications and announcements, presentation of our annual report. Gentlemen and Lynn, welcome to all crowd into that one table if you like, or Frank, you're gonna take it?
The one to the big podium.
How are you doing tonight? Thank you for coming in.
Absolutely.
I'll first start off by saying I think these are the thinnest ones we've had in a long time, which is a good thing.
The thickest ones?
Thinnest.
Oh, thinnest.
Which is a good thing.
So which one are we gonna take a go-through first tonight? Who's gonna be giving us the presentation tonight? Frank Smith.
So I think you've met Kyle before, but Kyle is a manager with Powers &amp; Sullivan. He's, plays a big part in the audit, getting the audit done, overseeing the work that people are doing.
Thanks for coming back.
Thank you.
And you know Richard Sullivan.
Mm-hmm.
Thought I'd just give you a quick overview of the audit process, and then I'd give you some financial highlights, so go over like the financial statements.
Absolutely.
And then take a look at the other reports, the report on federal awards and the management letter.
Perfect.
But I'd first like to just start off by thanking the town manager who's not here right now, and also the finance director and the rest of the finance team for all the cooperation and assistance that we got throughout the course of the audit. We appreciate all the time and effort that goes into preparing for the audit. There's a lot of work that has to be done to get the information together that we request and that we need to do, to do our work, and they've always done a great job out here as far as getting us the information that we need, and this year was no different, even with, you know, the challenges of implementing a new accounting system and some other turnover that happened in the finance department. Still, from our standpoint, we got everything we need, we got a very good package, same as we have in prior years, and that was really great. And from our standpoint, the audit went very well.
Yeah, we have an outstanding staff, and Lynn, thank you very much for all the efforts you put in in supporting the team.
From a timing standpoint, we were out the week of July 4th for our preliminary audit work. At that time, we're doing our audit of the federal awards, we're testing transactions, we're reviewing internal controls, and we're documenting all our planning procedures that we need to do. Then we're back out in September, September 12th, for another two-week period. We're wrapping up any loose ends that we might have had when we were out for our preliminary work, and we're also completing all of our year-end audit procedures and compiling the reports that you see there in front of you. Draft reports were issued on October 11th. That was about two weeks after we finished our fieldwork. The fact that we could issue drafts that quickly after pulling out of the field, that's an indication that, you know, the town was prepared for the audit and we got everything that we needed to be able to complete the audit. So that's a quick turnaround, and that was also really good to see. The final reports, though, the reports were finalized on December 20th, and then the, the CAFR was submitted to the award program, the GFOA Award Program again, the fiscal '16 CAFR. The town has received the award for the last four years since the town has been submitting to the program, which is great. That's a prestigious award for financial reporting, and the comprehensive annual financial report that the town prepares is definitely a big step up from the basic financial statements, and that's completely optional. You're not required to prepare that CAFR, and it shows a commitment by the town, by the leadership of the town and by the finance team of the town to take that on. It makes for a more transparent report, and it's a more user-friendly report. There's trends, trend information in there, there's statistical information in there, there's a lot of usable information in there, and we feel that there's a good value to that. From there, I'm gonna talk about some financial highlights. Probably one of the biggest financial highlights for the year was the upgrade of the bond rating from, to AAA by Standard &amp; Poor's. From what I understand, that's the first time in the town's history that the town's received a AAA rating, so that was great to see. I know that a lot of hard work went into that, and it's not something that happens by accident, so we'd like to commend the town for that and acknowledge it. The town also refunded $1.6 million of long-term debt during the year, and there was a savings on future debt service of $212,000 due to that refunding. And the town also implemented a new accounting standard that shows up in the financial statements on fair value measurements, it's GASB 72. And so when you're reading through the financial statements and you're looking at the cash investments, if you're comparing this year to last year, you'll notice some additional disclosures in there related to fair value measurements. As far as general fund results go, your real estate and personal property tax collections are excellent there. You have about a 98% collection rate, which is very, very good. Your, your revenues and your budgetary results are very strong. You had a revenue surplus of $3.6 million. Of that, $746,000 relates to tax liens, $1.2 million was related to motor vehicle excise, $714,000 was related to building inspections, $400,000 of departmental receipts, and $294,000 related to FEMA, which was for snow and ice reimbursements. And then addition to, in addition to that, you also had appropriation surplus of $2.4 million. And the largest elements of that were public safety of $221,000 and employee benefits of $1.7 million. So these budgetary results are an indication that your operations are structurally sound and that you have good budgetary controls in place. Your general fund, fund balance totaled $19.8 million at the end of the year. $624,000 of that was restricted for debt service. $1.1 million of that total fund balance was assigned, and that assignment related to $596,000 for encumbrances and $525,000 that was free cash voted for the next year's budget. Your total unassigned fund balance was $18 million, and that was 13%, or actually 20% of expenditures. You had stabilization funds that were included in that number that totaled $6.6 million. General stabilization was $4.3 million. Capital stabilization was $673,000. Your OPEB stabilization fund was a million, and then you had a new special education stabilization fund with a balance of $603,000 at the end of the year. Your free cash was certified at $11.2 million, or 12% of general fund expenditures. That's a healthy free cash balance. The rating agencies like to see at least 10%, so when you get over the 10%, that's very good. And for the enterprise funds, I'm gonna give you the results on a budgetary basis, which is how you maintain those on your books. You had positive results in all three of your enterprise funds, which was great to see. Your water fund balance totaled $3.8 million. Your operations increased your fund balance by $948,000. That was attributed to $551,000 for charges of services coming in better than anticipated, and $421,000 was related to an appropriation surplus. It's similar results for the sewer enterprise fund. Fund balance totaled $3.3 million. Operations increased your fund balance by $985,000, and charges for services were $643,000 better than anticipated, and you also had an appropriation surplus of $182,000 in sewer. The last enterprise fund is the Os- Osgood Hill Enterprise Fund. Your fund balance there was $464,000, and your operations increased that fund balance by another $227,000, and again, that related to charges for services coming in better than anticipated. Those are really the things that I wanted to highlight in the financial statements. If anybody has any questions related to the financial statements, I can take those, or we can hold them to the end. The next report that I'll go over is the report on federal awards.
A question on, on all our reserves and all, and stabilizations. Is, does there come a point where it, it would be better served to not have as many, as much in our reserves? I mean, I know that sounds like a silly question, but at some point, you should be spending for infrastructure, whatever, so you, you reach a level that should satisfy the rating agencies, not affect our bond rating, and then, and maybe using it for, for projects or whatever instead. At what point, at what point are we safe? And also too, it's also respecting the taxpayer. We shouldn't be just collecting money and, and stockpiling it. At some point, it's, okay, we're good, now we do this. So that's my question. And when do we know when we're at that point? In which account, you know, certain accounts would? I think you know where I'm going, so.
I think that probably comes down to your long-term financial planning and how you're planning on funding different expenditures and different projects. And without having that in front of me, I can't say whether your balances are too high or too low. I'd, I'd have to know what the plan was, but I do know that there is a plan.
So what would you suggest? Would you suggest a meeting with the, the town manager and our finance director to see how it all ties in with the plan and what you would recommend that we do? Is there, is that something that you would do, or is it something that we would put out the proposal and you would just review it?
We could certainly look at it to understand what the plan is, but as far as making recommendations for, you know, policy decisions on how you manage your funds, we really can't.
I think it's not so much the policy decision, it's just more your wisdom as to, okay, you're, you're good if you wanna start, you know, paying cash for capital projects where you, where you can or whatever.
So I think if I could summarize your question.
I mean, we have our, we have our reserve fund policies in place, and all of our reserve funds are at, with, with, with one exception.
Our goals.
Are at our goals.
Right.
So we don't, we don't exceed or whatever, and it's one of the reasons that led to our AAA rating, is that we have worked through, to those goals over the last five years, and we're there now at almost all of the funds. So we won't be coming to town meeting to add more and more and more, just to get to the levels of the goals. So the board has approved them. The board and the finance committee have both reviewed and approved the policies, and that's where we're at.
Right, that's what I mean, it's so.
Right.
Rosemary, I do have a calculation every budget season.
Can you speak just for the people at home at the microphone? I'm sorry, Lynn.
No, no problem. Within the reserve policies, there's a calculation every budget season to see what the balances are, and it's based on a percentage of the budgets that we're presenting and moving forward with for the future year. So I do that calculation in my spreadsheet to determine how much we need to put in each budget cycle to keep to that level.
Right.
So, for example, the stabilization, the regular stabilization fund this year, we're only looking to put in $159,000, and that will keep us at the level of the percentage that we need to be at based on our reserve policies. The capital stabilization varies a little bit because we wanna look at what we have in our capital plan for future expenditures and what we wanna use that for. So we determine, based on a five-year period, how much we should be, try and put in each year to get to that goal within that five-year capital policy.
I guess my question, Lynn, is is there a point where we exceed our goals, or are we just gonna?
We really don't exceed our goals.
We don't ever exceed. That was my question.
No, we don't exceed our goals. We come up to our goals, and like Lynn said, we have to make an adjustment every year, and because we're, we're achieving our goal and staying there, that's what leads the rating agencies to give us that AAA rating.
That's, that was my question.
Or one of the reasons.
Is it best to be a little bit above your goals?
No, we try and stay with.
Does it cushion? No, does it make a difference?
No.
Is that, that's my question.
Like for the capital fund stabilization, if they see a CIP come along, they may wanna build that fund up so they don't have to go on the street to borrow.
Right, exactly.
The key use of, of reserves is, you don't wanna ever try to get reserves on a constant basis structurally into your budget, or things that are gonna have to come up year after year after year. There's a thing called one-time money for one-time expenditure.
Exactly. That's what I was referring to.
I think they do a pretty good job of that. So, and get yourself in a bind, if you begin feeding the budget with your reserves, because it becomes structural, in other words, it never goes away.
Right. We used to do that.
And we don't, and we don't, and that's, and that's why we achieve the goals set by the reserve policies.
It's amazing. Here we are talking about, gee, when do we, I'm asking you a question, where is our, where do we stop building our reserves, where it used to be like?
Why don't we have any reserves?
How come we can't build up those reserves? So it's a, it's kind of a nice question to be asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board on the financial results?
When it comes to the Stevens Estate, our station would pretty much have, because we need to relationship, we have that, that facility. And I noticed that you had made five recommendations, including that we provide police escorts to the deposit of, of cash funds. Is that just, just good management on the end of the deposit, or do you think that we should be having a police presence around cash at any time that that facility's open?
I think those deposits tend to, it can be at night oftentimes, and that probably, in the weekends. Yeah, that it probably can make more sense, or something like that, versus making a deposit during the day where you're more local to a bank. But the comments, that comment was the follow-up. We did a follow-up on consulting engagement that was done by another firm back in June of 2015, and so we basically took their report and the recommendations that they made and went up to the Stevens Estate to check and see what the status was, what they had implemented from that report and not. And so.
Is that a part of that?
Yep. So.
Makes sense, and in any cash business, whether, or cash being transacted, anytime a police escort, you know, when you're at night, you're leaving a venue late at night, you've got that kind of cash, it makes sense.
I, I know that I'm concerned, it always been just the exchanging of cash, period, and the presence of cash in that facility, seeing the nodding happen.
Unfortunately, that situation up there is very difficult because it's a function hall.
Exactly.
It runs on the weekends, so that's not the main concern.
That's unique, it's, it's.
All of the deposits that are done here at Town Hall during business hours by elite markets, that's the one that's outside of business hours.
Okay.
The only one.
And that's for, that's just simply because they're taking that money off-site, and it's not just the very presence of, we talked about the presence of cash as being another issue and trying to address that. This is about the actual fact that they're taking that lump sum off-site. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, good. Could I go on with the rewards?
Awards. Okay, yeah, report on federal awards. This report is required for entities that expend over $750,000 in federal funds in a given year. The town expended $2.4 million in federal funds, $445,000 related to school lunch and breakfast, $1.6 million for education grants, and $384,000 for disaster assistance, which was snow and ice. We audited the special education cluster as a major program, and there were no findings, no questioning costs, and no internal control deficiencies were noted during the course of that audit, so this is a clean report. You can't do any better than this report. So very good results as far as our audit procedures related to the special education There are no questions on that, I'll move on to the management letter. Anybody? Are you good? Okay. The management letter, I always like.
You save the best for last, huh?
Yep. But there are five comments in the management letter, there's one prior year comment, and two new comments, and two informational comments. The prior year comment relates to a recommendation to put a purchase, a point-of-sale system in place at the Stevens Estate and to track liquor inventory. It's our understanding that the point-of-sale system was purchased in July of '16, and they were anticipating that it would be implemented in the fall of '16, so we'll be following up on that next year to see where they are with it. There were no procedures that were implemented to track the liquor inventory, and there can be a pretty significant sum of money that goes through there for liquor, so we think that that does make sense, and some of those point-of-sale systems have the ability to track inventory, and so that might be something that's worthwhile looking into to see if the, the inventory can somehow be tracked through that system. The other comment, the second comment at the Stevens Estate. Recommendations that were made, and the Stevens Estate hadn't followed up on them, so there were things that still weren't implemented at the Stevens Estate, so those are noted in the comment. I don't know if you want me to go through all of those, or they're listed there.
We can certainly read through them, but Ray, do you know if there's any been any, any plans to implement any of these?
I know there's a plan to do something regarding bringing in a management company to do the bar and taking that away from our business, and that RFP is scheduled to go out the next month.
Okay.
So that may address that in an indirect manner.
But we can certainly follow up on those when we're doing our preliminary work this year. We can stop by and see what kind of progress they've made and go over them.
Okay.
The next comment related to improving the timeliness of cash reconciliations. That comment was due to the turnover in the treasurer's office and the fact that the bank reconciliations got behind and they weren't being done on a monthly basis. However, after year-end, the town got caught up, and we still felt that we needed to include that in the management letter, just because it was something that occurred in the period that we were auditing, so we wanted to document it, but we don't think that that's gonna be an ongoing issue. There's a new treasurer that's been hired, and there's a new cash management software that's being used, so we're not anticipating that this is gonna be an issue at all going forward, but we wanted to make you aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
The last two comments are what we consider to be informational comments. The first one relates to a couple of accounting standards that are due to be implemented, GASB 74 and 75. 74 is actually not gonna affect the town because you don't have any OPEB money set aside in an irrevocable trust. You have OPEB money, but it's in a stabilization fund, so it doesn't qualify.
We do.
You do, you do have it in the trust?
Yes. We do have it in the trust.
Oh.
Yeah.
72.
16. We do put it in the 16.
So we've just established that, that you're, you're.
Okay, 74 does pertain that. Okay. So, let me start over. GASB 74 is gonna get implemented this year, and there's gonna be additional note disclosure required in the financial statements, so that will all be, you know, added in. And then in '18, GASB 75 will be implemented, and there will be additional disclosure for that. But GASB 74 focuses on the trust itself and the reporting that's required when you have a, a trust on your books, which you do. So we're gonna work closely with finance director and town manager and make sure that all of those two standards get implemented and that financial statements include all the disclosures that need to be in there. And then the last informational comment relates to the Uniform Guidance. Uniform Guidance is, it's documentation that came out by the federal government that basically takes old cost circulars that were related to federal awards, auditing federal awards and managing federal monies, and consolidates all that guidance into something called the Uniform Guidance, which is now what you're required to follow when you're auditing a federal program, and there's different compliance requirements in there that you must follow when you have federal funds and you're expending them. The idea was to consolidate and streamline the previous information that was out there, and then there were some new requirements that came along with it, certain documentation requirements that recipients of federal awards must now have, and probably the, the biggest one is documenting internal controls over the federal awards in accordance with a COSO framework. And so that's why we have this comment in the management letter, is to make you aware of that, and it's something that if it doesn't get done, at some point in time, it's gonna probably elevate to a finding in a management letter, so it's something that, or to a finding in the single audit report. Right now, we just have it as a comment in the management letter, but we're gonna work internally to try to come up with a template. We know of a couple, at least one community anyway, that's done a template, and we wanna try to, you know, work with our clients as much as possible to help to get them, help them to get this in place so that they don't have to have a, a finding in their single audit report at some point down the road. We think it's important, and just wanna stress that. And that's it for the management letter. Unless you have any comments about that or questions?
I think, you know, thank you. Obviously, there's a number of things there that we will be hopefully following up on, especially the Stevens Estate and, and those internal controls you just discussed. So I think very thorough, very good job, as usual, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Other than we, we appreciate your direction and with your advice in the past and some of the policies that the town manager and the board has put in place, has brought us that AAA bond rating, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Don't be afraid to tell us if we're straight. We don't wanna lose it. Let me put it to you that way. We don't wanna lose it, so. Yeah, all good. It's a very thin report. That was my first reaction. I was, gee, this is great.
Thin is good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carl. Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, any other communications and announcements for tonight? Anybody?
Selectman Watson wanted to impress upon the community her excitement, because she spent the weekend at quite a wrestling competition, so she wanted to make sure that we did not miss that. That's weird, why would you be there? Making a joke.
I was in high school.
So, so Selectman, on behalf of Selectman Watson, because she really is the, the passionate booster for this program, and on behalf of this whole board, we wanted to just acknowledge the state champs that North Andover is, so.
Great. A little bit of a surprise victory, and so our common practice is that they will all be invited to the board meeting, right?
Absolutely.
And they've, they've done well. I mean, we've had a lot of state championships, so for those who don't know, the mother of the coaches in, in the audience this evening, so, yeah, it was great. Congratulations.
Very great. Any other communications announcements? Anything else coming up? Any other events coming up?
Friday is a press event here, I think we've identified, we received a Green Communities designation of Laurie's direction and assistance. That came along with a $169,000 grant, which we must invest in green-related initiatives in the community, and we're working on a budget to look at some of those, including the possibility of an electric vehicle, some LED streetlights, and work at improving some of the lights in a couple of the school buildings as well, all to reduce our energy footprint. So it's great news, we'll be entitled to future grants, but $169,000 for us is one of the larger grants that we have received in the, in, over the years, and we would expect that we'll be applying for more grants that we'll now be eligible for because the community embraced and the board embraced the Green Communities Initiative.
Right, so just for those who attended town meeting last year, this was an article that was voted on on town meeting for us to pursue the Green Communities designation, which Laurie brought us through and kinda shepherded us through that whole process. and kind of shepherded us through that whole process and got us to this point where now we have, as in the town manager mail said, we have a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars to spend on green initiatives, which is phenomenal. Thank you. So the whole town should be proud of that because we all had that vision to move into that direction. Okay, any other communications and all this? All right, moving forward then. We're going to go to consent items and we're going to take things slightly out of order since we have some folks here that are here to do some donations. So I'd like to do, go through the donations first and we'll take them in that order. So first we'll talk about donations. So first on the agenda is to accept a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from the North Andover Women's Club to the fire department. And we have our fire chief here with us tonight as well as members of the North Andover Women's Club. So would you guys like to come up and?
Well, I'm the president of the North Andover Women's Club. For those who don't know too much about our women's club, it's over eighty years old. It's a diverse group of women from all different parts of town, all different types of professions and interests. And our main goal, point blank, is we raise money and we give it away. So we're giving a thousand dollars to our public safety. We will be, tonight, we're presenting the thousand dollars to the fire department. I'll let the chief talk about what he's applied that money for, towards. We ask that they apply it towards either training or community outreach or so forth and so on. But it's a terrific club of women. We just gather together and as I said, we raise money. We've given, through the years, we've given scholarship donations. We have given money to the middle school towards musical instruments. We've given money to veterans. We've, in the past, we've given money to the seniors. And we're just always looking for a great cause. And so it's been, it's a fun partnership with our public safety. So chief, would you mind telling everyone a little bit about what you've used our thousand dollars towards?
Rosemary came to me a while ago and said there was going to be a fundraiser for public safety. And I attended the event. It was a very nice event. I didn't realize it was going to be that amount of money. So what we did at our station, we had three locations for some TV monitors to use in our conference room foyer and actually my office. We had it all wired, but we just didn't have the monitors. So Rosemary came in with a few of the other members of the, of the organization and we're taking some photos of the, of the building and the pictures. And when I saw the vacant wall there, it reminded me how important that these, these monitors were going to be for us. So we put one in the foyer. We put public information on there. Currently, we have things on carbon dioxide detectors, smoke detectors. We have scenes of the firefighters during training. Because a lot of times people come into the station to meet with the fire prevention and there could be a group of people. And we have an area there that, you know, rather than just looking at a bare wall, they now can get information, not only on the fire department, but the town. We have information on town events with the cam on the monitor also. I think Ray will appreciate this. Ray spent some time actually in my office and we all huddled behind my desk looking at my computer screen where now we don't have to all get behind my desk. That we can, we're more professional. So when people come in, we can, we can show a presentation without people all bunching up behind a computer screen. So we deeply appreciate it. I got right on it.
He did. It was like, I have to be honest, it was like an epiphany. We were there for another project that we're, some of us are working on. He goes, I know what it is. But we loved it because it was training. And I will congratulate the chief. Boy, did he spread that thousand dollars. I mean, you did really well on how you spent it. We were all really surprised. He's a bargain hunter and we were thrilled about that.
So we appreciate it and thank you and.
Can I just beg the, a little time from the, this meeting so we have a quick picture with the chief? So it's our, we, tonight we have the rest of the executive board. We have the vice chair, Carol Bamas. We have the treasurer, Joan Tetler. And we have our secretary, Linda McHugh, along with myself. So if you wouldn't mind, real quick.
You have like a giant check?
No, it's actually in the packet, but. The chairman is going to.
He's trying to social media.
He's very good at that, by the way. He's classically trained.
Would you like it?
You're good right there.
You guys all in?
We're all in.
You have to smile.
Smile. And then after that one, after Mike takes that one, look this way.
Oh, I'm looking at Mike.
Come on, some smiles.
Oh, jeez. He's tough. He's a tough photographer.
All right, look this way right back. Well, there you look away. Okay, we're good. Thank you very much. Okay, we still do need to motion to accept that donation.
Motion to accept the thousand dollar donation.
Yeah, throw the boxes out.
Motion to accept the thousand dollar donation from the North Andover Women's Club to the North Andover Fire Department.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Donnie, I really would be more comfortable if you seconded it, not, because I'm a member of the club.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Thank you very much for the Women's Club for that very generous donation and for the event that you put on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. And we will soon be back with something for the police department. They're working on that. And anyone who wants to join the North Andover Women's Club, just give me a call. Yeah. Laurie, you could wear your kilt.
I welcome you to come in and take a look at them and see what we've, what we've done with them.
Yeah, it's.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, ladies.
Okay, next on the agenda, we'll accept a donation in the amount of one hundred dollars from Philip Benito to the Veterans Services.
Beninato.
Beninato, I'm sorry. My apologies.
A little bit of espresso does wonders for him.
Okay, anybody here to represent this donation? Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the one hundred dollar donation from Philip Beninato.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Once again, thank you very much for the generous donation. All those in favor? Okay. Finally, on the donations, we have a donation to accept an industrial-sized refrigerator valued at three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars from the Friends of the North Andover Senior Center to be used at the senior center. Anybody here to speak to that? Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the donation of thirty-four hundred and fifty dollars from the Friends of the North Andover Senior Center to the senior center.
You're accepting a refrigerator.
Excuse me, the refrigerator value.
It's an in-kind contribution.
I'll second that. And Friends is also a great organization of service.
And the discussions to Jim.
You like to what?
Oh, the Friends meeting?
The Friends is a nonprofit. We can't require that they, can we require that they give minutes?
We can request. Sure.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. And Donnie, I'll let you follow up with the Friends to get the minutes. Okay. Again, thank you for their generous donation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that closes our donations. So we're going to loop back to appointments. First on the list is to appoint Ryan Sherenda for the Old Center Historic Commission, Old Center District Commission. And Ryan is filling some pretty big shoes. His father passed away last year and he was a very long-term time member of that commission. And Ryan is stepping into his father's shoes to take that over. Do I have a motion?
And I'll second that. And Ryan will have no doubt will do a great job. He grew up near the Old Center and actually lives not too far from the Old Center. I think he will do his father proud. So thank you, Ryan, for stepping up.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, next on the agenda is a, the trash contract. A vote to authorize the town manager to execute a trash contract in excess of three years. We discussed this a little bit last meeting. We have an opportunity now to have reviewed that contract. Do I have a motion?
Motion to allow the ten-year extension, or motion to grant the town manager authority to sign a contract up to ten years with JRM Hauling and Recycling.
Second, discussion.
Just like to speak to that for just a moment. There were, as some of you who watched the meeting, I did have a few questions and reservations. Mainly, it's a ten-year contract for six and a half million dollars. I feel pretty satisfied with the results of that. I wanted language in there that if the hauler did not work out, could we pull out without penalty? If it was acquired by another company, same thing. And that language is in there. But for me, I just, again, it was ten years, six and a half million. And I'm, and we asked town council to review it and I'm ready to vote, so.
Okay.
Yes. Well, that's, and that's a good catch on Selectman Stewart's behalf because those barrels in the past were sixty-five dollars that would have been passed on to the homeowner and we did not want to do that. And then it would limit the amount of trash as well, so.
But that wasn't in the contract.
No, it's not in the contract, so that's good.
Okay. So for this item, to go into a ten-year, we need a vote of four members of the board. So I will call that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We are good. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a request from the North Andover Farmers Market Planning Committee to close First Street from Main Street to the entrance at one fifteen First Street near us every Sunday. All right, let me read that again. Request from the North Andover Farmers Market Planning Committee to close First Street from Main Street to entrance at fifteen First Street every Sunday beginning June twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, through October eighth, two thousand seventeen, from eight-thirty to three-thirty. Wow, that sounds exciting.
Mr. Chairman, so this was something that we had brought up, we've brought up several times in the past. However, I think our feelings were that the best route to go about planning this was to work with a group of volunteers and a nonprofit. Because we have worked with local business owners, nonprofits, and community volunteers, including the North Andover Merchants Association, of which I am a member of the board of directors. I'm actually, despite working on this project, going to recuse myself from this vote, with all due respect. So, thank you. And I'd like that reflected in the minutes. Please, Laurie.
Okay, Selectman DeColigero is recusing himself because he is a member of this board. Is there anybody from this board that wants to speak to this and give us a bit of an overview of what we're going to be doing? And, okay, we have a couple of members. We have Chris Allen here tonight and we have Michael Smolak here tonight.
Well, really, I just wanted to come up here and thank a lot of people. This was, it's quite a project that we have undergone. And this is just a couple of us here from the committee. But I wanted to thank some individuals, starting off with Eric Affori, our Director of Community and Economic Development. He gave us a tremendous amount of his time and guidance. And I don't think we really could have just started it off without him sitting down with us. Also, Brian LaGrasse, our Health Director, who really, he just opened doors for us and gave us a really, a better understanding of what it means for people to sell things at a market. Of course, Andrew Mailer, who's had many, many conversations, I know, with Phil. And there's a really big thank you to our Chief of Police, Chuck Gray, really for reaching out. And, and I think it was because of him that we actually are going to be able to make this market happen. So thank you so much to our Chief of Police. And then again, thank you to all the volunteers. There's been a lot of people who've been working with this and local merchants who have reached out and are so excited about it and all of our business and the Merchants Association, all of their support and their blessing and their funding. And there is, I think, one person who really deserves most of the credit for this, for the two thousand seventeen North Andover Farmers Market, and that is Selectman Phil DeColigero, who just recused himself from the vote. And he really is the glue. He is the glue that bound all of these pieces together. If it wasn't for his persistence, her vision, his vision, his endless optimism, focus and hours and hours and hours of hard work, much more hard work to be done. And it is because of Phil that we already have five committed vendors. I mean, committed, paid and papers. It's like, oh, my goodness. And that's because of Phil and his outreach. We have a dozen more who are lined up. It's a little bit overwhelming. I mean, to realize that it's really going to happen. And so what's going to happen is this is going to be, this is going to be a signature event for North Andover. Every Sunday during the summer, there's going to be a lot of people coming downtown. They're going to look at our new town hall, the beautiful facade for the, for the Brad Street that we have now. Little beef up for our merchants. And it's really, it's going to be pretty. It's going to be great. It's going to be a nice little social event. So we're thrilled and thank you, Phil. And I think Michael could probably maybe speak a little bit more as to what we've been doing.
Sure. We've been watching this for, I first got involved about a year ago and in addition to all the other, the work that he's done, the many, many, many phone calls that we've had about this and, and the work that he's done. I printed, in case anybody wants, guidelines from the Department of Agriculture. I'm an appointee by Governor Baker on this agricultural board and I'm going to be there tomorrow for a meeting. And it's one of the things in terms of, when I look at myself as a farmer, we're pretty much an endangered species now. There aren't many of us left around. And this is one way which we may be able to survive as an industry. It's a fairly vital industry, but on a, on a, on a smaller scale. Seventy-five percent of the farms in Massachusetts gross twenty-five thousand dollars or less. And I'm the average age of a farmer or slightly above right now. I'm getting a little older now. And so it's, it's true. It happens. But, you know, it's true. There are, there, it's a serious problem. And one of the things that we're looking federally at is how there's going to be so much of the agricultural property nationally that changes hands in the next twenty years. It's draconian. They're putting a ton of money into, into programs to encourage people. And I'm involved in Land for Good, which is a farm succession planning nonprofit. That's New England Y. And a whole lot of other things. So I'm very much up to my neck in these things. And, you know, I've made the commitment in nineteen eighty-three to keep my farm going and hopefully I'll be able to pass it on to someone, you know, before I'm ninety. And, and we'll see. But they've done a great amount of work. It's a good, it's a, it's a good start. I've had good contacts with Jeff Grassi, who started the Havel Farmers Market. He worked for me and we've been in touch with him. He's been a good asset. Nothing like somebody who's done it before to give you, give you the guidance because you don't have to reinvent the wheel. You just have to recognize it and replicate it. And, and the Department of Ag Resources have people in there to kind of guide this along if we need it. So and they're, I'm pretty connected to those folks so I can get people out at any point that we need.
It's going to be exciting.
Yeah, and maybe even in terms of, in terms of the opening and, you know, I don't know, maybe the.
It's going to be pretty.
Very nice.
It's going to be organized.
Sure.
Fancy and awesome.
Well, it's the energy, the people behind it that make, that make it too. And it's, it's just another part of what makes North Andover a very, very desirable community to live in.
I should mention too, Tina Messina has just been just so involved. And it would be hard to do any of this without her because that's all her, it really is.
It's her real estate.
It's her real estate. And it's because of her that we actually can say, we're using your parking lot. And she's like, great, so.
Great.
Yeah, it's been great.
And will Small X bomb be represented there?
I'm, I'm working on a few things. Right now, I'm thinking in that direction.
Okay.
Yeah. I've had a couple of projects that I've been working on right now.
So can I ask you a question? Did you ever send the cider donuts down to Atlanta?
I asked her that.
You know, I never got any, no, because I never got anything from anybody that even told me. I found out about it. My brother John texted me in the morning. Did you see this?
So for those of you who don't know, Governor Baker wagered Small X apple cider donuts with the governor of Georgia on the outcome of the Super Bowl.
Right.
Well, you didn't have to send it. What am I saying?
It was MVP, I think it was MVP for, it was an apple pie. He was from Georgia. It didn't make any sense to me.
No, you're right. Peaches makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and it was kind of strange because I heard nothing. So of course, the marketing person and me went out to the animal area and found a goat, greatest of all time, took a picture with the goat and the, and the donuts. And I, and I sent it to like the five.
And he picked one of them, I think, too.
Of course he did. And, and I sent all these pictures to the five contact persons of the governor's office, figuring that somebody would pick it up someplace, and somebody did. But I just thought it was kind of funny. It's good.
It was fun. So for the record, they're, they make terrific donuts. It's not like, cider donuts and with some with cinnamon, some plain. And I heard it's really good to throw them in the microwave for a second if you don't eat them.
Five seconds. Right. And it's good to go.
So you're stoking at them?
Mm-hmm. Great. Yeah, well, we're open, we're open all year round. Yeah, well, we're open, we're open all year round. We're celebrating our ninetieth anniversary of owning the farm this June, and, which is quite a milestone. So you'll be hearing more about that. And I have members from at least three of the prior owners' families coming. Glennies, Reynolds, Stevenses, looking for Tyler's. And then, and then back before, I think the Nomkeg Indians were around, but I don't know if any of those are around, so we'll see. But, no, I appreciate it all. And I appreciate all the support the town has given the farmers. And this is just another layer to help not just the farmers in this town, but in neighboring communities, too. And hopefully, we can, we can have a little bit more of that industry going. I love seeing more in North Andover.
Absolutely.
Well, great.
All right. Great. Thank you very much for that update. All right. So do we have a motion then for the closure of the streets for that time period?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to close the Main Street to the entrance at fifteen First Street every Sunday beginning June twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, to October eighth, two thousand seventeen, from eight-thirty to three. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
For official.
Do you like any of these copies of these farmers markets things? Or is this a piece of paper? Little right, like, if you wanna fall asleep? I'll leave them out.
You can leave them up here. Thank you, Mike.
Selectman Stewart will weed them. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the consent items, we have a list of streets that need to be excavated by Columbia Gas. I think normally the town manager approves these, but if they're over a certain distance, I think they have to come to us. So, you are a representative from Columbia?
Yes, I am.
So you come up and give your name and expiate to us?
Sure. My name is Eric Schlitt. I'm a construction supervisor with Columbia Gas. Our offices are in, on Marston Street in Lawrence. We are seeking approval for some gas main replacement projects in town. We have four projects on the list here. I wanted to just basically talk a little bit about how we do our work, if there's anybody that's interested in that.
Sure.
So, we're targeting bare steel and cast iron infrastructure that's aged. It's, in some cases, been in the ground since the early nineteen hundreds. And this being an old mill town, there's plenty of old pipe in the ground. So, we are replacing that pipe with plastic mains, high-density plastic polyethylene. And in the course of replacing the gas mains, we're also replacing the service lines and moving all of the gas meters to the outside of homes for safer and more reliable gas service. On the agenda, do you want to go through each one? Or do you want me to field questions specifically on any projects or any parts of these projects?
Let's just take a look.
I can talk a little bit about our meetings with the Department of Public Works here in town. We've met with John Borgesi and his group over there at the DPW. We're trying to coordinate our schedule of gas main replacements so that we get our work done prior to road paving in town. And I know that's important for us and the DPW and the residents in town here. So, we have some very large projects, and we're interested in hopefully coming to some agreement on a start date, hopefully later this month. But we work hand in hand with the DPW and John Borgesi on any work that gets approved at meetings like this.
Okay, great. Are there any questions from the board?
I think we should notify all the people involved to get ready for summer build. That's what's last year's.
Well, this work, you're looking to get this done before the summer, right? I mean, you're...
No, we took one.
He's just said, he says he's trying to get it done before the paving begins, summer paving.
Yeah. So, these, some of these projects are very big projects. The, I guess the ideal situation would be that we would double up and triple up our resources on some of these projects to try and cut down these long durations of the projects. But we, we're gonna try and get our projects done while the town paves other roads, and then we'll switch, and they'll be able to pave the roads we've finished our work on. Just to, your comment about notifying customers, we do have standard customer notification forms. We send postcards to the residents and also letters explaining the work and what kind of things are gonna be happening in front of their house and in their front yards.
I don't think you know what's gonna happen, John, that's all. I'm just a first man.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we just take these, each one of these individually?
They're individual motions, it looks like.
Yeah. Why don't we take this, four motions, so we could take them individually, I guess? Would like to make one.
Can I?
Mister Chairman, I'm gonna be recusing myself because I do have investment property in one of those areas.
So you're gonna recuse from all the votes?
I can recu, it would be from section petition one.
Okay. All right. So do we have a motion for petition one? Phil, did you have another question?
So, so we're comfortable that these roads, are these roads going to be chopped up? Or do we truly envision that they're going to be smoothed over for the most part?
Well, you wanna talk about your method for trench repaving?
Sure.
Some of these are all trench repaving, gentlemen.
Sure. So, we work closely with the DPW on their paving schedules. That's the real driver on this work. So, roads where we plan on replacing our aged infrastructure, our cast iron mains, the town will be coming in and paving those roads because it was part of their original paving program.
And that's, so last, last meeting, we reviewed the budget that you had presented, and it identified that there would be about a dozen streets that we would be targeting with repaving.
Right.
I assume these then are those dozen streets that we're going to be going after?
Some of them, not all of them, but certain sections of them.
Yeah. I can, I can name some of those streets that we've been in discussion with. Peters Street, Saunders, Cleveland, Water Street, Second Street are the sections that we're targeting. And in some cases, our gas main projects have to extend to side streets in order to properly replace the pipe.
I'm not familiar enough with all of these streets to know if they've been on a list recently. Like, are any of these streets, streets that we've recently paved?
No, recently repaved. The streets identified were streets that were placed on our capital plan. Columbia Gas isn't aware we're about to replace the roads, so we typically notify the utilities and say we're about to replace the road.
But he had said that he, that sometimes we have to go up side streets as well. And we do do repairs on side streets. So I can think of examples, probably even, this is my time on the board of Selectman, where we've done repaving work, and then the utilities had to go in and rip up some sections. And so I just, I wanted to make sure that these weren't streets that we had recently done.
I can talk a little bit...
No, it's not allowed.
And it's also one of the reasons why DPW puts the caveat not to start the work till late eighteen, because that's when the plants open. So the streets can be repaved properly, or the trenches can be paved properly.
I think obviously you've got a safety issue, too, when you've got aging pipe in the ground that's transporting natural gas. I think it's something that, you know, I applaud the utilities for working closely with the town to target those streets that are gonna be repaved so that they are, you know, that there is a minimal impact on the conditioning of the roads.
I can add a few more comments about roads that the town does not currently have paving plans for. When we have to go in and trench in those roads, we do a, what we call same-day paving. So we put hot top asphalt on the trench every night. At the close of the entire project, if we finish the project earlier in the construction season, we come through and we mill our trenches and repave those. And a good example of that, where you'll see trenches we milled last year, is in the, all of the streets between Chadwick and Prescott's, favorite. So this is a big rectangular neighborhood, and we did the south side milling and repaving last year. And you'll see a lot of the north side being done this summer. So I think it's a very nice finished product. I think the residents there could attest to the fact that the roads are restored quite nicely for trench work.
Mister Resident, could you attest to that?
They fixed up Moody Street, and then they got, they got all the others. You can see where the temporary patch has cracked, and they have to rebuild it.
Yep. So that, those will be the restoration streets that we do this year. So it's a good example of final product versus like what we would call semi-permanent or temporary.
So milling would be the traditional method we would use to repave a roadway. So, but to answer that, you had a specific question of whether or not these lateral connections will go onto streets that were previously repaved?
No.
No. Okay. How about for, for some of these streets, like Saunders Street, we've discussed before, and the residents have concerns about parking? I know that Selectmen Stewart just asked, well, how would we be coordinating with those residents that really only have access to on-street parking?
Yeah, it's gonna be, what's your communication process with residents?
So, like I had mentioned earlier, we send postcards and letters. We have a certain cadence where I think it's a few weeks before, they'll receive a postcard explaining that work will start in the area. A letter will become with more specific information. But if, if parking or street parking is an issue where we might need to lay the trench down on a certain section of the road where cars are parked, we work with North Andover Police Department to post no parking signs.
And that's, but then where do those residents go?
Yeah. I think interesting on Saunders, which is something that we may want you to coordinate with Public Works, is maybe an interest to open the back, and this has brought a discussion, but the back gate to Town Hall's parking lot. So at nighttime, we'd give an opportunity for the Saunders folks to park in this parking lot back here. Saunders is here.
Yep.
So maybe want, and I can, I'll look back with them, but I would suggest that on Saunders Street, providing the opportunity to park in here, which may mean we'll move the vans and give them access into this parking lot easier than going around, may provide them an opportunity to relieve, because this is a tough street back here in terms of parking.
And if you want to leave them high and dry, so good luck, you know, go find something. But obviously, it's good that we're being polite.
If you touch base with the possibility of them using Town Hall parking lot, I'll close the loop with John and see if it makes sense.
Okay.
And we can provide some opportunity. So Town Hall parking lot would be the logical place for them to park, I think.
All right. Other questions? You good? You can move?
No, I'm good. I'm...
Okay. So can we have a motion? I guess we can lump them all together if you'd like.
No, I think they, great.
It doesn't matter if you lump them all together. There's no particular conditions from one to the next that changes the votes. Yep. It's up to you.
They have enough to vote. It's fine either way.
Mister Chairman, motion to approve all roads as presented by Columbia Gas for excavation and gas main replacement. Would it, would it be, is it okay to lump it that way? Or would you like me to list the streets for the purpose of?
As long as you indicate that it's as presented in the, as presented, that's fine.
Okay. So we have a motion for all streets as presented in the, in the agenda this evening. And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mister Stewart, did you vote aye?
Yeah.
Okay. All opposed? None? And one extension. So three, oh, and one.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
...presentation tonight. Okay. Our final list on the consent items is an amendment and an extension to the town manager's contract. We have taken a look at the manager's contract and have made some modifications, and we'll be extending that contract through December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. So, I think we had some final copies that we were gonna approve or sign. What's that? Okay. We can review quickly the changes. The changes to the contract were, the town manager currently has provision in the contract for a car that is supplied by the town. That car is going to be repurposed, and that section of the contract scratched. The town manager's salary will be augmented to, 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 to take care of that, that loss of that car by ten thousand dollars annually. And then finally, we have included a stipulation for an end of term, or if the town manager is released by the town, we have made it equitable with the other heads of departments, and the two main head department, chief of police and fire department. So we've made the contract equitable with those provisions as well. And that's about it, right? And the extension to two thousand twenty-one. All right. So I'll hear a motion.
Mister Chairman, I motion that we approve the town manager's contract, extension in all provisions contained within.
Okay. Motion and second. Any discussion?
I just want to, to say that I just, I just wanted to be very clear that through mutual discussion that we felt as though it is cleaner and neater for the town, that we are not in the, in the car business. So that the compensation is not a raise. It is to make him whole for the town manager having his own car. There are many reasons why that's a good idea, but one in particular is he, he cannot travel with that car out of state without getting permission. It was just an awkward relationship in the board's opinion, and I think the town manager agreed. So I just want to make it clear, he did not get a raise. He got made whole. And it's not just the car. Part of the arrangement was gas, repairs, insurance, so forth and so on. And I think that was pretty much the most important thing. Oh, and even having said that, and lock your ears, even with that, he is still, compared to our peer communities, on the lower end of the pay scale. So, we've got a triple-A bond rating, and even with adding that, making him whole into his salary, he is still on the lower end of most of the surrounding communities. So, I just wanted to make that clear, that this is not a raise. It's making him whole, and we are now out of a car relationship with the town manager. And I think it's just better for everybody.
And it's also consistent with other area communities that also provide the same type of benefit for the town manager as well.
Yeah. But even with that, he's still on the bottom quartile, to say the least, of other area communities, so.
You're a bargain, Andrew.
Bargain?
As I said, block your ears.
I think that this is a, it's good to remind folks about the consistent performance that you have attained with our annual evaluations. And it's important just to remember that this is, I think, an administrative cleanup as well. So it's great that we, I think, are striving for that consistency with all of our executives in our community. So, a happy change, and I'm glad that we were able to come to that agreement, so.
All right. So did we have a motion?
Yeah.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Certainly four, four not. Four not. Okay. So that closes out on consent items. Next, we will go into licensing. Do I have a motion to enter licensing? You have a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're now on licensing.
We have two items, two major items on the agenda, as major as they get, licensing. So we have an application on which has been submitted by Mister John Betty, doing business as Auto Express, seeking permission to locate a class-two business at eight hundred Turnpike Street, Suite three hundred. Illegal notice was published on February seventeenth, and a butters were duly notified. And we have within this packet recommendations from the police, fire, and building inspector. So, do I have Mister, Mr. Betty? Correct. And so, Mister Betty, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and just speaking to your application.
Okay. My name's John Betty, and I'm applying for a wholesale dealer's license, which is auction to auction, dealer to dealer. There will be no vehicles or mechanics or anything at the place of business, the office. It's just, the office would be used for, like, to sign titles, do R and B one forms.
Okay. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Right.
So no vehicles at all?
No. No.
And no auctions at all?
No.
And that's consistent? With the class? So that's right across from the Willows, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, make a motion to approve acting, oh, I'm sorry, to approve the request of John Betty, DBA Auto Express for a class-two license.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Good luck.
All opposed? Hear none? Yep, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, next item on the agenda is from Merrimack College. They have four nights that they have asked for a one-day wine and malt license. Is there anybody in the audience from Merrimack College? No. Who was that unfamiliar face? So, thought I'd make it known. So, we have March 4th from 6:30 PM to 11:30 PM. And we have March 5th from 1:30 PM to 6:30 PM. March 4th is a Saturday. For the record, March 5th is a Sunday. We have March 17th, 6:30 to 11:30. And we have March 23rd from 6:30 to 11:30. Any, any questions or?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen, acting as license commissions, approve the four one-day wine and malt licenses from Merrimack College for performances on March 4th, March 5th, March 17th, and March 23rd, as presented.
Motion made in second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hear none? Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're out of licensing.
Okay, we're out of licenses. Old business, we have none. New business, we have none. Public comments? We have some folks in the audience tonight that I think may wanna have some public comments. No, sir? Are you here?
Sure. Let me ask you a couple of questions about the area.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name, and I would-
I'm here on the record, I live in 48 Pleasant Street. And I had nothing particular in mind in coming here tonight, except just to sort of see. But I do have a couple of comments. One is, I thought the financial report is very encouraging, and it's, makes it a pleasure to live here, to know that things are being operated so well. So, I, 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 I wonder whether Selectman Smedeely was, was heading just a little further down that path, as to say, "Well, perhaps, since we're doing so well and our reserves are all topped up, whether we might ever consider actually either capping our taxes or even reducing our taxes at some point, since we're doing so well?" In other words, we, is it, is it compulsory that we continue to spend more and more, since we clearly have the capability of doing what we need with what we have right now? I just, I just asked that question.
Just so that you know, and correct me if I have this number wrong, but we, the last few years, have not been going up to the full two and a half percent, which is kind of unheard of with neighboring communities. What was last year, one and a half? What was it?
I think that might have been two years ago.
Two years ago, one and a half.
Why don't we make news and keep it at zero?
Yeah, well, that's, that's always a good goal.
The, the other question that I, that I had, and on the trash, is, is this a replacement of our current service provider?
Yes.
It is.